They're easy to get to, let's make sure we update, update, update these parks. They're getting tired, and I think we all know that. Number three, cities should not worry for the time being about new facilities. Let's focus on what we have. And I think that is such a smart thing because I see so many communities wanting to build new, and it is time in our communities that we begin to take care of what we have first and improve that. So I was really, I think the community is right on. And we asked the question, "What was your favorite park or trail?" And this was the order that people told us. So Skyview, Tahoe, Cowboy, and Johnson in that, in that order. "I believe improving existing parks and trails is important." Look at that number. Eighty-seven percent of the people said yes. Let's deal with our existing parks and get them up to a whole new level and something we can be proud of. Then we asked the question about new parks, and we don't need any new parks. It was quoted, "Let's just fix up what we have." And so I started doing some checking on that. Statistically, the, the community is correct. We have right now approximately 15.67 acres of parkland per thousand residents. As you look at that second bullet, standards that you go by in communities is about 10 acres per thousand. So we are in great shape on the amount or the quantity of parkland that we have. And I did a further little calculation. About eighty-eight-five percent of the people here live within walking distance, within 15 minutes of a park to get to. Great base to work with. You're very fortunate. "I believe building new parks is important." Look at that number. So that was affirmed by the survey. Only thirty-six percent of the people said we need to build new parks. So clearly the focus on taking care of what we have. Aquatics? I think, quote, "I think Norfolk would benefit from a water park." To, we desperately need to improve our pools in our community right now to number three, where we don't need a water park. So we had that one kind of across the board, but generally it was about, yes, we need something more to do, and a water park is a great idea. Memorial Park? Just a couple of comments there, but I just gleaned out of what the survey said, but the whole facility there is an embarrassment to the city, and I think most people in this room would agree with that. And Memorial Park is by far the worst facility in a city of our size in the state of Nebraska. I think the comments went on and on about that, and I don't think I need to talk about that any further, but I know upgrades are all being looked at. "What facility improvement should be considered the highest priority?" So we asked that about Memorial Park. We had a series of questions to say, "What would be the best combination of projects?" So number one was combine project to renovate the football field, baseball field, and aquatics, all as one package, and forty-five percent of the people said that's what we need to do. And number two is just improvement of the football field, twenty-one percent, or just build a new aquatic center, seventeen percent. And then it kind of came down from there on other projects. So the first three was related to Memorial Park. So clearly a combined facility is what's being desired by the public. This is a stunning slide as well. The people are ready, the community is ready to expend or support a bond issue or for doing improved parks and recreation improvements in the city. Sixty-one percent is virtually unheard of at this early stage in when you're asking the public about would they support it. There's a clear support for not only doing something, but to pay for it as well. Recreation programs. More activities in the parks and events would be great. People said, quote, "Need more programs for teens and adults and seniors, not just kids." And people could not speak enough about Big Bang Boom and the Christian Cross concert and some others. So keep those going. It's a great thing, and it's a great venue for Norfolk. A survey also questioned, "I believe Norfolk should increase user fees." So this kind of goes along with that. You know, you can see we're a little more split. Forty-one percent or forty-two percent said that we should. But basically, that's a pretty good number, just saying, depending what those programs and facilities are, people are going to be willing to support those. So. "I believe Norfolk should attract more regional sporting events." Clear number there, seventy-one percent. So again, begin to program, and let's bring more regional tourism activities and sporting events in. It's great for the whole economy. Riverwalk project, mixed bag, to be honest with you. People from number one said it's a waste of money and time. However, a trail in that location would be good. Number two, Riverwalk project would be a huge waste of money. Number three, quote, "We need to develop the Norfolk Riverwalk and connect it to parks and eating establishments." Keep the city leaders focused on their time on other things, but yet then somebody else also said, "Keep city officials involved in the Riverwalk." So I'm trying to give you a cross-section here. So it was really kind of a split and on that. So here was a questionnaire on that. I believe development and implementation of the Norfolk Riverwalk projects is important to the future. And you can see, pretty well split, forty-three percent strongly agree or agree. But I think what I gleaned from all that, what people are really interested in, is at least a greenway trail through that area and connecting north to south. And so that's where, where I took this plan as a first basis. Park operations, can't say enough about what the city is doing on a very tight budget and what Pat and his staff do. Those are some of the direct quotes. People are very proud of what, and they know times are tight, but they're very proud for what's been done. Economics and marketing. You know, I think I always like to try to bring into this the importance of marketing our parks and what do they mean for the economics of a city. We need to inform, this is a quote, "That we need to inform the public as to the value of our parks, and we need to sell the economic value of our parks." And then third, the department needs a stronger identity brand. And I think for too long, parks has taken kind of a backseat, in my opinion. And I think now is the time that people have traveled, and they have seen other great parks and other great cities, and they're want to see that happen here. And I've asked a question in that survey, "Do people believe that parks and trails increase the value of their property?" And I ask this everywhere, and this is one of the greatest responses, that people really understand that, yes, it does increase my property value. And they're correct again, you know, according to National Association of Home Builders, parks and recreations are as, areas may enhance the value of up to fifteen to twenty percent of property. So there's no doubt about it. The closer you live in, within 300 to 500 feet of a park, it'll vary from zero all the way up to fifteen, twenty percent. Economic development of park and rec, just a little sidebar here. Here's the benefits, the economic benefits of parks. Real estate values and property taxes increase, business retention and attraction, tourism revenues. And they attract the younger creative class, which I think a lot of cities are striving to get to. And if you look at business attraction, some of the location criteria, number four right now for businesses, corporations, industry looking at going to a city, number four is recreation. So it ranks right up there with the top five or six. So what's the plan? Program recommendations. And I have these recommendations. I've kind of gleaned some of the top items. There's going to be a reporter booklet that just describes these in more detail. But develop and fund recreation services at the same level as park services. Increase recreation staff to two full-time equivalents. Clearly, we're understaffed in operations, and so that's something I would recommend that we take a hard look at in our budgeting to make sure we try to meet the needs of the community. Two, incorporate two new core services for the next four years to create wide age segment appeal. Remember, we've had that request for programs for broader seniors down. And then develop state-of-the-art programs and activities for youth, adults, and active retirees, just like we said in number two. So for programs, those are the top-line items. Operational recommendations. Enhance maintenance standards. Pat has some of those going now, but try to upgrade those in more detail so everybody knows what they're working towards. Enhance the work order system for daily maintenance. Pat has that again already on track, but due to just lack of people power, can't quite get there with an enhanced system. Additional capital improvement dollars are needed on a consistent basis to maintain and take care of the parks and rec facilities to lever, level desired by the community. We can't put monies in one year and take it away the next year if we're going to try to make this thing move ahead. It needs to be on a consistent basis if we try to fund this. And if we can't do so much this year, but we, if we can incrementally bring it up, but the idea is not to start and stop. So I urge you to kind of take a look at that word, consistent, there. Establish a lifestyle, a lifestyle, yeah. Establish a life cycle replacement program for existing assets in the system. In the past, we haven't really had a replacement program, but what we recommend is seek to budget at least about four percent of your asset values of the park into renewal of the park system each year. And I think Randy has done a calculation on that earlier when we were working on this, but we have some numbers that might make sense. But we try to, that's what most cities our size do, is about four percent of the asset value. That's what we try to reinvest in each year. Develop partnerships with local schools on the football field, including sharing capital and operational expenditures. Incorporate restrooms at all sports parks. And I'm really discouraging the use of restrooms in neighborhood parks. The maintenance requirements, the problems that have had on a social standpoint, liability, vandalism. Usually, at this point in time, what most cities are doing are restrooms if it's an hour or less play event. So usually at a neighborhood park, you go to the park for an hour or less with kids, and so that is something that hopefully the kids can wait an hour. But it's getting to be when those sporting events of an hour, hour and a half or greater, that's when I'm recommending we put in restrooms. Trail recommendations. Number one is create better north-south trail linkage along the river from the Community College down to Tahoe. And this, this graphic just shows very briefly. On the wall to your right, my left here, is a map that shows all this, so I won't go into a lot of detail. But when you look at the map, basically, the black are existing trails. Here's your levee trail. And then this is saying, "Let's try to connect a trail that uses," here's the existing trail with the footbridge. New trail is orange, and bring it all the way down past Winter through Johnson, ultimately down through, under Norfolk Ave, Park Avenue over to the levee, and then tie in from the levee around back to Tahoe. There's other spurs in here that connect things together, like neighborhood trails and neighborhood parks and schools. That's in more detail and finer grain on the map. Trail recommendation number two, create better north-south trail links from Skyview to Tahoe and Cowboy Trail. You can see this as well, but here, of course, Skyview, I'm going to move, yeah, I knew it, sorry. Where am I? There we go. But anyway, Skyview's in the middle. North-south connections are the orange. You can see the black going right through Skyview. That is the existing trail. And then it connects its way down to Tahoe as well, as well as to the Cowboy Trail if you look straight down. Cowboy's in black down at the bottom. So again, it's all on the map here. I urge you to look at that afterwards. Trail recommendation three, create better walking and wellness opportunities with loop trails. Something we're seeing very, these are the parks that I'm recommending loop trails. Something we're seeing very popular is just to create a walking loop trail within the parks instead of on a trail to a destination and back. It can be measured and have footage markers or length markers in the park. But Skyview, enhance the trail there. Tahoe, expand Cowboy Trail. We've got a Berry Hill Park is a new 600-foot loop trail to be in proposed. College View Loop Trail, Johnson Park, Liberty Bell. And so some of those parks in the recommendations do have these loop trails starting is what the recommendation is. You know, I'm going fast. I'm trying to, how am I doing on 30 minutes?
You're doing good.
Okay, thank you. Existing park recommendations. I'm going to take these in alphabetical order. I will not read them verbatim, but on the wall map, again, on the text part of that map, is each park and what is being proposed in each park. Again, it's an upgrade to these parks. Berry Hill Park basically needs to be developed. There's things to deal with, with erosion, and try to create more naturalistic environment with about three acres of prairie to reduce mowing. I was very focused on trying to eliminate or reduce maintenance in these parks and create more naturalized settings, and then create a loop trail. Central Park, some pretty big recommendations after talking to the junior high kids for a session and others, but do some removing of the waiting pool, bathroom, stage, basketball court. Some unsafe swings need to be removed in the pull-up bars whirl. Diagonal walk. Consolidate play equipment to make it all accessible and create open space with informal use in a picnic area. The, I feel like what we've tried to do in our past years is do everything in every park. And as a result, the parks have become, a lot of them to a point where you can't do a whole lot in any park because there's, parks originally were designed to have multi-use open space, just a big grassy area that could be used for many different things, throwing the football or blanket picnic. And now we have things in all, everywhere. And so the goal is to try to open some of these back up to get the, so that the users can determine how they would like to use them. College View Park, again, ecological theme for public education. I've got a loop trail there. Native prairie to reduce mowing again, and connect it up with the neighborhood. Have that ecological theme, even maybe some of the parking areas with porous paving systems. We have some great hills. Sliding hills are often forgotten this day and age, but use the hills for sledding in the wintertime, designate it. Watch where we plant our trees. So we don't have to put hay bales around them. Johnson Park. Johnson Park is one of the favorite in first parks. If we can do some renovation to kind of bring back some of that elegance of the park with shaping the basin out again. This is for those of you who hadn't seen this photo in the twenties and thirties, I don't think we can ever bring it back to this, but unless Pat really gets a great support staff. But it could become what I think's important as a downtown park that is supported off the trail system. It's next to the downtown. It can become the urban park for lunchtime activities and jazz-on-the-green kinds of things. Even downtown movies in the park are popular now, just like it's a return, and you put up a screen and people, families on Friday night come watch a movie in the park. I am recommending that Nebraska Avenue west of the maintenance building get removed, which allows Johnson Park Green to come all the way down to the river then. And at that point, we could do a canoe launch or a greenway trail that goes, as you look at the right-hand photo, all the way back up to Norfolk Ave. Johnson Park, there's some removals, and so I'm doing kind of the Rubik's Cube where we're taking the youth soccer field, moving it over to proposed park number two, taking the basketball court out at the half-court, moving it to park, proposed park two. Remove some of the unsafe equipment that's in there, that whirl and that slide. Create internal walking loop and maintain some open space for play. Liberty Bell, pool come out as we look at possibly new aquatics facility and create an internal, use that for parking, to increase parking for the park, and then create an internal loop walking trail. Nord Park, I'm recommending the Little Nord Park be decommissioned. I believe it's not, not centralized enough to the new development, to all the development taking place there, and it's not big enough to accommodate any reasonable usage. So I'm recommending a new Nord Park be positioned further east, and I'll show you that in a minute. North Fourth Street Park, remove some outdated equipment again. We have a huge parking area that can be reduced to reduce maintenance. North Pine Soccer Field, simple thing that you can get there. I stand in there, I say, "There's the levee trail." I saw people go by and said, "You just can't get there from here." So let's make a ramp, a connection to it. Skyview Park, if I heard it once, I heard it 100 times. Let's improve the trail system around Skyview Park. Unsafe, I witnessed firsthand baby strollers along with bicyclists and skate, roller skates all, or skateboards all at the same time, so it needs to be brought up where possible to make sure we try to fit ADA accessible standards. I recommend some low-level lighting for that trail because it's such a heavily-used trail, but let's make sure we maintain dark sky concepts. It would be something very low level. Again, I think we can create some prairie areas. I was calculating about 28 acres more to the south and east that we could turn into prairie, reduce mowing, and enhance wildlife, and also become an urban filter from the urban areas before it gets to the lake. Pave the roads and buffer the maintenance building. Let's screen that guy. It's kind of like a front door. It's not the best thing for our front door, so we need to screen that. Tahoe Zuka, Civilian Conservation Corps era. Let's try to protect that architecture of the park and zone the park. We now in east and west, active and passive. Right now, we have the core, the historical core of the park to the east was all passive. Over the years, as we try to do everything, we put the ballpark number five, I think, right in the middle of it, lost our open space. So my recommendation is that we take ballpark five, move it out of the middle. Let's create this big sun opening for multiple-use play. Move number five over to the west, to the east. The west. Yes, we move it over to the east. So I'll get my east and west back down. But all, anyway, where all the sports fields are now, we combine those. So there it is. Number three, relocate the baseball field, buffer the park maintenance building, improve picnic areas, pave park road and parking areas. But you can see that in the lower right there, if you just look at that, if you didn't know that was a ball field, that was a big open use for celebrations or activities or concerts even. It'd be a great open space. That's how the historical parks were designed. Renovation of campground is important. We've heard a lot of people saying that the campground be more heavily-used if we had proper facilities and more of them. So there was a concept plan developed in which we could get about 30 organized pull-through spaces to do that. And Warren Cook Park, we're almost at the bottom with the W's here. Remove youth softball. Move that over to P2. Everybody's wondering where P2's going at this time. Install playground to maximize the neighborhood and library patron. So we thought a playground by the library would make a lot of sense, and that's, the playground itself comes from West Side Park. I'm recommending that West Side be decommissioned. Do not see it being heavily-used. I think it's kind of a private open space for the residents. It's hidden from sight, and I think it needs to become something that the Neighborhood Association takes care of rather than be on our docket. Relocate the play structure over to Warren Cook Park. Winter Park is in great shape. We just got to get some ADA parking there and to the playground. Few more slides, folks. New park. Here's the Nord Park relocation, the post-park P1. You can see Victory right on the left, and the little green postage stamp there with the existing Nord Park. Recommending somewhere to the eastern edge and along the drainage way and the natural vegetation, the trees that are on the east side is where somewhere in that vicinity a new park would go. About five acres would have things such as a playground, informal open space, picnic shelter, half-court basketball, walking loop. Proposed park P2, interesting. Recommending proposed park P2 go to the west of the YMCA. We have the open space. It's owned by the city. I checked with, it was federal land and water grant. I did check with Nebraska Game and Parks Commission, and this kind of a now neighborhood park concept would be perfect. I think it builds synergy with the Y, could help the Y out with parking, as well as we could get a canoe access point there as we go downstream. Contents would be the youth softball, or that we take from Warren Cook, the youth soccer would be new. The half-court that we took from Johnson goes there. And the skate park that we take out of Memorial, because Memorial eventually, if we get our aquatic center built in our new development, the skate park needs to be in a more visible location, and that's a good visible location near the Y as well. Incremental development as time allows and budget allows. Proposed park three, P3 is out west. You can see it's out near Roland Hills Drive, five-acre park. And P4 is north of that, up near Eisenhower. These are only to be built as we have development gets us out that way and not until, so. But I wanted at least planned where they would go as we need them, but certainly low on the, on the priority list. A couple of recommendations, finally wrapping up here on conservation area. As you go on North 13th Street where the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission, Nebraska State Patrol offices are, there's this wonderful open space, and I really believe that it needs, it's with its environmental diversity, it needs to be put in conservation and just preserved. Someday, we say, "Well, it's way out there right now. We'll never be," but someday there'll be development around it, and I would hate to see us lose that, and someday, again, just like, I'll compare us to the grand scale of Central Park in New York, which was way out there at one time. But we will have development around this someday, recommending saving and preserving that, as well as the area to the north of the Tahoe Zuka Park sports fields as a conservation area as well. Park cost. Here's all the existing parks cost summaries, about a $6 million price tag to do all those improvements. It excludes Memorial Park improvements, which is not included in this number. And your proposed parks are about 1.5. They're about a half million dollars apiece. Trails a big number with doing a lot of trails. Brilliant to build all the trails that we've talked about in this plan. And the public preferred projects, if we were to kind of summarize with what we feel the public would like to see, obviously, the Skyview Park Trail rebuilt is a, is number one. Tahoe Zuka Park, the Cowboy Trail extension, which I know the city's already got on the docket. Greenway Trails, we get from, again, NECC to bring us down to, all the way down to the, to Norfolk Ave as a first phase. Proposed park P2, which is next to the YMCA. Johnson Park renovation. South section of Greenway Trail that gets from Norfolk Ave to the levee. Pazwalk, east and west trail. Campground renovation. Skyview Park to Tahoe Trail. Central Park renovation. So that's kind of the public preferred if I was to put in a top-10 list, but in, done. Are we near 30 minutes?
Pretty darn near.
Okay.
Nice job, Dave.
How about that? All right.
Yep, nice job.
I did it, Gary. So I was under pressure of Gary Miller. That's a big pressure to have. So I'll take any couple of questions anybody might have. Again, that's for viewing afterwards, and this will be put up on the website. We have a website for the project. We'll try to get a PDF of this and put it up as well, if that's okay with the mayor.
Please.
Okay?
Please. Anybody that might have.
Information overload.
Yeah. And we knew it would be. So certainly, you know, I'm, there's going to be questions I'm sure that you're going to have as, as we further review this, but if anybody has anything directly or any comments that you want to make.
Dave, question?
Yes, Mark.
My name's Mark Paul. We brought up an interesting trend. Appreciate more of your information. You talked about making sure we're developing park systems that support multi-generational individuals that participate. Can you share a little bit more about what that concept is and what you're seeing out there in other communities and other park systems that involve that multi-generational community?
Well, big, the first thing, and probably the primary thing, is the change in programming. It was all so youth geared in the seventies, eighties, nine, early nineties, and now with the whole demographic shift of all us boomers, it's moving the other way. We're getting back to more passive use, loop trails, the concert-in-the-park thing, art-in-the-park. So we're trying to move, we're seeing more and more communities move that way. So I think as long as we keep that front and foremost, that it's more than just, it's more than just softball, baseball, and swimming. So that's the short answer for that, Mark.
That was a good question, Mark. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
You know, Mayor, as far as an order, if questions come up in the next week, are, how might they respond? Get that information to, those questions to whom?
Well, I think you certainly have great representation here right in front of you with the council. You can give some of your thoughts and such, but certainly if, can't we make it available on the website to have the availability of questions to be on the web? I like that because I think it gives everyone opportunity to see them.
Yes.
Suggestions? Al, you got any better thought?
I think that's a good idea, you know, either through the web or contact us right at the city auditorium. We can direct those questions to you, Dave, and that way we have a, have a presence here to get them to Dave. But we'll make sure that if anybody has a question, let us know. We'll get them to Dave, and we'll get the answer back out there. I'd like to put the answers on the web so that if somebody has a question, there's probably other people that have the same question.
Thank you.
So the more people we can get that information to, the better off.
Okay, and what we'll do, the website for everybody, the link, if you go to the city's website, there's a link for the park system, the park and trail system master plan. You can just go over and see this information, so. So with that, thank you, and I think our goal is to wrap up the next couple of weeks. And so what we'll do from here is take any comments, turn this into a final plan, and produce a neat, tidy, very graphic little booklet and for everybody's bedtime reading, and go from there. All right?
Thank you, Dave, very much. Appreciate you being here tonight. All right. The magic happens here, huh? We're going to jump then to the Airport Authority Budget Discussion. Who am I going to look to to lead this discussion for us here? Who am I gonna look to to lead this discussion for us here?
Dan Garry is my name, Chairman of Norfolk Airport Authority. We've been asked to come in with a preliminary budget or some idea of what the airport's gonna be asking you for this year as far as a budget is concerned. Do you have a handout of the two pieces of? Basically, I'm gonna go to the second sheet and do what I've asked Jerome to do is put together a budget of what does it cost to run the airport? I mean, just, just let's get down to bare bones here and let's figure out what we're spending for mowing the grass, moving the snow, replacing the door, replacing the light fixtures in the field, paying the electric bill and those kind of things. And that's, that's kind of what is reflected on your second sheet. So a breakdown of that, the left-hand column, 258,897, is reflected over here in, in the amount of property tax revenue that's required to run, run the airport at a, basically, we took the last three years of operating and this is the average of what it costs us to run the airport. So this is a bare bones type number that I, that we put in that column. If you remember, last year we changed the way we do the budget just a little bit because we have a new inter-local agreement where you guys want us to chase all of the federal dollars that we can. And when we chase the federal project, we as the Airport Authority or city have to put in 5% matching funds, sometimes seven or somewhere around there. But we used to try to build that into the budget every year when we come in here and say, okay, we have this project coming up, we're gonna have, we're gonna have this much cash outlay on a $2 million project and we build it in. And then the federal project might get delayed or, or there, there were times when they were trying to run them faster or whatever. So basically, we took that off, off budget. So in this operating number here, that's no longer in there and we have an inter-local agreement that says if there's a federal project involved, you, the city, are gonna back us on that federal project. You want us, you want us to go after all we can, which is common sense. I mean, basically, the FAA funds a lot of the airport stuff and in their master plans, they, they have money for runway overlays, new lighting, all kinds of things, and we go after those projects. So that's, that's a way a lot of our funding comes. But anyway, that's taken off budget. So if you look in the next column from, the next one over from the left-hand side, you'll see a $58,224. Now that, the way our inter-local agreement is, we, we are to chase these projects, we come to the city and we borrow the money from your budget, then we build it into next year's budget. So this $58,000 is what, what we use as our share of a capital project last year and we need to build that into this year's budget. So we, we have borrowed that to cover our portion of the, the two runway overlay projects that are going on out there right now. So that's the, that's what the $58,224 is. We don't, I don't think we anticipate in the next couple of years any real large, well, we got the sewer project that, 2013, but, but in the next couple of years unless, there's not a lot of capital improvement, other than the, the big one that was gonna be a stimulus project for, for new drainage all the way through the airport. So we're, but I think that's shown on our master plan somewhere around 2013.
Depends when the money becomes available.
Yeah, well, when the FAA decides they've got it and give it to us, you know, so who knows when that, the FAA's been operating since 2007 without a budget from the Congress. So they keep, all of their funding has been stopgap funding since 2007. So it's, it's frustrating for everybody in the FAA not to know when their funds are coming and it's hard to do planning. Anyway. So that needs to be built into the, into the budget there. Then the next, so, so that's basically the, the number we stand at, at bare bones by the time we put what it takes to operate the airport and then pay the city back for what we borrowed from you on our capital improvement. So that, that line there is, is there where it can be. Then, we're basically not making improvements to the airport, we're really not doing much of anything. So we are, we are simply operating. Now, now let me, let me say this, the airport is in very good shape right now. We've had a lot of capital improvement programs going on, the runways are in excellent shape, everything is about as good as you can get it out there. I mean, we've moved out of the terminal building and that hasn't been used and, and, and whatever, but as far as the airfield, the lighting and landing system and everything out there, it is in very excellent shape. So we can, I don't like to say this, but we, we don't have the capital projects, we're not gonna have necessary capital projects to keep the airport going. Those have, those have been done and that's been expended. So the next three columns are kind of a, I don't wanna say wish list, but, so budget money was available. You see a ground power unit there. When a, when a larger aircraft comes into Norfolk, they shut their engines down and I don't know whether you've been sitting on an airplane, but when you, when you come up to the terminal, you'll notice that the lights blink a little bit and you'll see, you'll see this plane switch over from its own power to a ground power unit. They don't wanna run their batteries and the air conditioning and everything else on that plane, so there's ground power unit. We don't have one, so we lose, we lose traffic out here. One of the things that we're trying to promote for our airport is the fact that you can come into Norfolk, fuel up and be out here and you don't have to get in an air traffic pattern. We don't have an air traffic control tower. So if somebody that's flying across the US, they can, they can simply come into the pattern, notify that they're coming into Norfolk on the radio, come down, fuel up, grab a bite to eat and be back gone again and make a, make a turn real fast. And that's where a community like us can look for economic development and that's where we can, we can pick up revenue because it's good that way. But if they come in, we don't have a, a ground power unit that would, that accommodates a very large airplane. So that, we have, we've had planes call, you have one, no, well then they fly right on by. So that, that's kind of the, the number one thing that we've got on our list, we ought to have that. We had a potential FBO operator look at Norfolk and think about moving here and that was kind of the first on his list, that I don't care what you do, you need to get one of these if you're gonna accommodate any aircraft. So I've got that over in the third column. The next thing that's happening at the airport is the, you know, the runways and taxiways and all that have been overlaid. It's been quite a while since we've done anything to our access roads and the entrance road and those kind of things coming in. And one of the roads going to the hangar, I don't remember which hangar, but the loader fell through the asphalt. And so the access road and, and the entrance roads out there are starting to deteriorate. Now if we had our, if we had a larger budget, we've got an overlay project going on, so we would be tempted to go out and tell the guys that are overlaying the runway right now, hey, give us a quote on overlaying these access roads and taking care of. So I've got that in the fourth column over there. Then, one of the things that we've done, well, I asked Jerome to put this in here to bring our, our adjusted cash balance back to $50,000. So right at the moment, we have a line of credit with a bank and we are, when we fill the fuel tanks, it takes about $25,000 to $30,000 to, to take fuel on. And we're running, we're running a balance of, I don't know, 20, $20,000 to $30,000. So sometime we need to run our cash reserve balance back up so we're not running over and, and borrow money for fuel all the time. So, so that's what's in the fifth column. So if we were, bare bones is column number two. If you wanna do some economic development and make the airport a little bit nicer, then we'd like to see is move us over to column three or four. So is there anything else that you'd like to know about the airport or comments or?
Then, in the airport operation costs in the first column, 258,897, does that include debt service? That is all, all, that's 100% of your, I mean, that's 100% of your, your cost, right?
Okay, well.
This, this column here?
Yeah, okay. See, see the 258 over here? That's the property tax and that matches, that matches this over here. So this is where that number, property tax levy, so that's where you carry the number from the sheet we were talking to over to where it fits you in our budget. So, so no, you will notice that, that in receipts over there, we have hangar rents of 70 some thousand, we have fuel sales of 300 and some thousand. So, so.
There is debt service in the, in the 287, Dan. Down at the bottom on the left-hand side, bond payment.
Yeah, okay. So this is, yeah, that's, that is. What's the cash balance of our outstanding bonds? I hate to put you on the spot, but just so they.
640,000, I think.
The same for the note payment?
Okay, now the note payment is on the line of credit loan that the, the authority took out and they, right now they owe 105,000. They wanna pay that off over a three-year period. So I put in 35,000 a year to get that caught up.
That note was taken out on what?
About 57,000 of it was used on that new hangar and the rest of it has been used to buy fuel and support a cash balance. The last 30,000 that we took out was, we were down to a negative balance of 2,800 bucks and had some fuel coming in, so we had to borrow another 30. Our present cash balance at the end of last month was like $24,000.
But our, our income ultimately, though, we're selling fuel at least to break even, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
One of the problems we had there, Councilman Lang, is that we had projected the fuel sales of about 480,000 for last year and with the economy and so on, we're 207,000. Fuel gallons are down over 30% and our dollars are down over 40% because the price of fuel has gone down. And we, we squeeze the margins to try and be competitive.
Dan, on these federal projects that you have identified, the 58,000 is the Airport Authority's share? How much has been advanced on that this year? I mean, the city has advanced some in that inter-local agreement? To, I mean, to do the engineering, those upfront costs, correct?
Yeah, 24,000.
24,000?
Yeah, but see, you have to invest the 24, then we get the reimbursement, we get 21, but we're paying you back the 24. So we're short.
At the end of the day, when we do a project and our portion is, is 5% of the project, we're gonna be 5% short when, when we're done with the project.
In, in your budget documents here, I didn't see where that federal reimbursement was accounted for.
Page one, you have page two?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the total project five, we ended up with 2,180, page 13. First column down, first bottom.
No, I don't have that sheet.
We don't have any information showing.
Right here.
Okay, you got it.
Yeah. You don't have it in your everything.
I didn't get that, man. So, yeah, he just added that on.
I ended up tweaking this and didn't get enough copies for everybody. But the project balance at the first of the year was 2,72672 and we're going to receive 2,014448, so the net effect is gonna be 58,224 that's gotta come out of the budget
It's a little bit hard for me to follow, follow how that works, so I'll, I'll try to. All right, let's just say we're doing a construction project and, and the bill for the month is $50,000. We come down and get $50,000 from the city in Norfolk. Okay, we pay the bill. But we also send in an application to the FAA that, hey, look, this is our, this is our billing for this month and you owe us 95%.
47,000.
$47,000. So when we get our check from the FAA, we run back down and we pay the city the 50,000 back. Right? The total amount. So then we're $3,000 short in the project. Then the next month we do, we keep doing that over and over again. So, so at the end of the day, we end up being the 58,000 short for the year. So we're going, we're coming back and building that back into the budget.
And I'm, I'm happy and satisfied with that inter-local agreement. That, that takes, we don't have to sit there and scratch our head every year and say, well, how, how much money should we put in for this? And, and you know, when they were trying to run that stimulus project, I was trying to get ahold of you guys, well, do I say yes or do I say no? Can we, can we get, should we, should we commit ourselves to 5% or 7% of a 3.5 million dollar project? And the NDA was calling me and, and so this, this kinda takes that off of the budget. We still gotta make the decision, but, but we don't have to try to build it in every year when we, when we work with these numbers. Well, that's what we're looking for. So if you, I mean, put this with the rest of your budget numbers and the decision that you have to make and we appreciate it and, and let us know what, what, anything else you'd like to know. I mean, I'm sure if you're sitting, you've got two, three months or, or I don't know how, just how soon you finalize your budget, but this is, this is where, what we're looking at and where we're coming from this year.
By law, we have to have the client figure our request to you by August 1st.
Okay.
So we have a couple of months.
Dan, on, on your receipts, the 70,000, does that include the new hangar rent as well?
There hasn't, there hasn't been much activity in the new hangar.
Okay, so the 70,000 doesn't include anything on the new hangar or that's a projected revenue from the new hangar?
No, no, I don't think we have anything included at all. If we don't have, if we don't have a lease in hand, we're not, we're not projecting it as, as income.
Okay.
So no, we're, we're, no. That's, that's projected actual cash that we got this year and we just, what, we add 3% to it for next year or something?
Not on the income side.
Not on the income side?
Expense side.
Okay. We put 3% on the expense side and nothing on the, on the income side.
Okay, so right now the new hangar has no, no tenant, no lease at all?
No.
Okay. And the 70,000 is just a reflection of what you received a year ago?
On all, all of the hangar, yeah.
Okay. It doesn't, it doesn't reflect any increases in rent or anything that way?
No.
So as a sidelight, it'd be interesting to know what kind of footage we have for rental space out there then. space out there, then. And I know you can't give me that now, but that would be an interesting number to see.
Well, we can get you a break on what the hangar rents are and what we're doing and what we're anticipating and-
There was a letter. Terry, who did that go to last August?
To the mayor and to the city council members. I had a copy of that.
And the data wouldn't change from that, other than that the new hangar has been completed since then.
Dan, do you have a proposed, on the hangar, do you have a proposed lease? I think this room, two, it's divided into two hangars, correct?
And what did we set for the rate?
We set the rate at $650, 30 minutes per month.
Yeah, okay, so it'd be $1,300 a month is what would be the amount. Now, we may, well, right now, we're going, we're trying to get tenants, so we may give a discount on fuel if you take it, or we may, whatever kind of package we can, sweeten up the deal. We're trying anything we can.
And the 57,000 that you put in there, that's the last of the payments on the hangar?
Yes.
I mean, there's nothing else to put into the hangar at this point?
No.
No, the hangar is, the hangar is free and clear, there's no outstanding bills on the hangar, period. Now, we do have our, we do have our loan that he talked about, a loan balance of 100-some-thousand, which is basically, basically that money went in the hangar.
Yeah, 57,000 went into the hangar out of the 105 line of credit.
That's correct.
Well, yeah, I mean, however you want to look at it. So, the actual cash maybe went to pay for the, pay for the fuel, but last month, we paid the rest of the builder, so, I mean, yeah. That's where the cash went, is in the hangar.
What was the final cost on the construction of the hangar?
About 536,000 plus repairs.
And that includes the 57,000 you said, or however you-
Yes.
Yes, and I hate, we wanted to work with the balance sheet just a little bit. That's what we have down for the total amount of money we spent on the hangar. But we widened, we widened the apron on the south side of all of our hangars out there. So that's, that's the total money that got assessed for that. Now, I would have probably taken some money out of the hangar and put it to other capital improvements if I was doing the balance sheet, but I lost that argument. Well, you know, the kind, where we decided to put it, and I think that was a good decision, we spent 150 to 200,000 dollars extra on that hangar by moving it over to where it is. But it makes it accessible from the outside. So anybody, any corporation that comes and wants that thing can park on the outside of the fence. We don't have to have all the employees and whoever's going to ride on the aircraft driving out in the air safety area. And then we had, it wasn't wide enough to get a big enough plane along the south row of the hangar, so we widened that entire piece of concrete so the larger airplane could get down there. So, kind of one of those things after you get started.
Appreciate you further. Before we let him sit down, any other questions or anything?
Appreciate your time.
Okay. Thanks for being here. All right. We're ready to move on to the final topic this evening, which is the preliminary budget discussion. Randy, let me say first of all, thank you very much. I appreciate this. Yes, I do. You're losing the crowd here, Al.
There's several pieces of, there's several pieces of the budget discussion that I want to cover with you tonight. First, the first issue I want to draw your attention to is the projects that you had identified in January are the basis for the long-range financial plan, and that's what we're visiting about tonight. One of the items that came out of the current year's budget was the council priority projects. Currently, we have a challenge at the library in that the heating cooling system failed. And I would submit to you that I think that the council's number-one priority, as we stand today, is to upgrade that existing facility, the library. And I think we would be prudent to put that $400,000 council priority money into, into the library itself. The total cost of that repair is about, between 400,000 and 500,000 dollars. So, as we talk about council priority projects and we talk about where is that money at, I think that is the most important priority of the city currently. So, as we move forward, I think that's something I'll be in front of the council shortly. The first place that we'll start is the very large sheet with a lot of small numbers on it. There's only a couple of issues that I want to draw your attention to there. This is really the foundation of the long-range financial plan. This is one of several documents that we use to create the summary. The first thing I draw your attention to is in the top. I will point out that the valuation, the property valuation that we use for property tax is calculated at no increase this year per the county assessor's office. We don't have any exact numbers. We won't have those until we're basically done with the budget process. As a matter of fact, last year, that changed after we finished the final budget, but at this point, there is no valuation increase. And that does affect our assumptions moving forward. The other piece that you want to pay attention to is the ending balance. You'll remember last year that the city had passed an ordinance that said we would have a minimum of a $1 million ending fund balance. Currently, we have, at the council's direction, changed that to $1,275. The $1 million was set in the early 1980s. If we were going to stay current with inflation, that number would be closer to 2.8 million. So, we're a long ways from that, but the desired ending fund balance is $1,275. As you look at the revenue side of it, the top half of that page, I would draw your attention to the sales tax. It is, as we shared with you last year, it's flat. There, currently, we are budgeting a 1.2% increase in property taxes. The other thing, excuse me? I'm sorry, sales tax, thank you, Jim. I apologize. Sales tax is budgeted at 1.2% for the increase, which is in essence, flat. The other thing that you, the other takeaway here is the, you take a look at the top three or four revenue sources of the city. It's property tax, sales tax, the MPPD lease, and charges for service. Really, those are the lion's share of what we have for revenue. The challenge that we have is the, the funding sources are flat. The only discretionary funds that the city has is the property tax, sales tax, we're at the whim of those spending the money. And, again, that's been very consistent in that 1% range for a number of years. On the revenue side, the last one I'll point out is the Keno money. Originally, that had been forecasted to be significantly higher than what it is. We have changed that assumption based on now having Keno in place for a little over a year to 350,000. On the expenditure side, the only thing I draw your attention to is, obviously, being a service industry, our largest expenditure is in human capital, in employee costs. And that accounts for, as you add it up, that'll account for an excess of 75% of our total expenditures. And that would stand to reason for the type of business we're in. With that in mind, I'll take you to the smaller summary sheet. What we have, what we have currently is the total valuation you'll see from 2009-10 budget year to the 2010-11 budget year, the property valuation, the general fund, excuse me, the valuation level is flat again. The general fund property tax, what does it take for our general operations? There is about a $301,000 increase just to maintain our current operations. The LB-840 property tax is 424,000. In order to generate the $400,000 of LB-840 money that the voters approved recently, it takes 424,000 because of what gets paid to the county for administration. The next is the council priority project property tax. Those taxes that go into our priority projects, you'll see again that that is flat this year, consistent with what was in place last year. Moving forward into the long-range plan, that does reflect the council's priority projects in the recreation, which is a voter-mandated referendum. The only reason that you would have an increase, as demonstrated here, is if the voters approved the recreation referendum. And that has a $5 million increase in the next budget year, 8.5, 8.5, and 5 million, respectively, over the next four years. Again, I want-
5 million over the next four years?
Over the next four years, in 2010-11, it would assume that the voters approve a referendum, and we're showing a $5 million increase in 10-11, 8.5 in 11-12, 8.5 in 12-13, and 5 million in 13-14. Folks, there's no magic to it. What we tried to do is break that out and look at what would be realistic. Until that is approved, it's kind of a shot in the dark, trying to show you what it is that this would look like, should the voters approve the referendum. So whatever we put in this paper, it looks good, it looks bad, it's a matter of what is it that the voters approve? That means our total property tax would increase in the next year, projected at 6.36 cents. The total property tax would be a $751,000 increase based on, again, all of those assumptions. We are just starting the process of putting together our operating budget, so I don't want to say this is where it will finally end up, but this is our long-range financial plan. These are the projections based on the assumptions that we had from last year, adding to it what we've learned between the last time we were visited about this, last July, and today. Assuming, again, the council priority projects, our operating costs, and the revenue projections. Let me slow down, make sure that, I'm sure there's questions, so I'll stop there for just a minute. I think the, a couple of points that I would make to you, as you, again, this is the long-range financial plan, this is not the budget. We are showing a $300,000 increase in operational dollars in 10-11, and 235,000 in 11-12. Now, that can be somewhat fluid, but if you look at the long-range financial plan, that's what we're projecting out over the next couple of years. In light of the most recent presentation, I will tell you that there is no new dollars for Parks and Rec master plan at this point. There's no money in there for, I mean, new money beyond what's available in the Keno funds and the existing Parks budget for personnel or for operating costs. There's a little bit of money maybe for capital costs, depending on what Keno does. The good news is, last year, when you looked at this, the projected increase for operating costs was a little over 500,000. Right now, it's at 300,000.
More good news?
I thought that was great news.
I'm not disagreeing, I'm just asking for more.
It all depends on where we want to go. And part of that is a product of, we're a year further down the road with the long-range financial plan. Some of the numbers that we were speculating on a year ago have come into focus as we get closer to it. And, so, I mean, that helps us give you a better picture as we're looking at the upcoming budget process that we're moving, that we move into now. The challenge that we have is, of course, LB-840 has passed, and that is reflected in here. But we also have some upward pressure on our property taxes because our cost of doing business is growing at that 3-plus% annually. Our biggest variable, which is our sales tax, it's also our, by far, our number-one revenue source, is flat at 1%. So that gap between where we're at and the cost for doing business is expanding. And we showed you that last year in a graph, and I think it would be consistent or even accentuated more this year. This will show you graphically a little bit more of, you know, where are we at currently. You'll see our existing tax base is at 9.8 cents. Our existing debt, debt service, is 6.2 cents. The council priority increase is 3.6 cents, LB-840 at 3.6. The 2011 property tax increase for operations is at 2.8. Now, what we have in front of us, the recreation referendum, as it currently stands, as it is without any changes or revisiting it, would be at 17 cents. City administrative offices would be at 4 cents. This graph can be built in a lot of different ways, but those items on the left are pretty well set.
So right now, what we're looking at is our current 19-6. So right now, what we're looking at is our current 19-6 with the LB-840 and the 2011 operations tax increase. We're up to about 26 cents.
That's correct. That would also include the council priority projects.
Right.
As have been approved to date. One of the questions that we frequently are asked is where does that put us relative to those other communities that we compare ourselves to? We have been the lowest property tax community, first-class city, for a number of years. After last year's budget increase, it put us at number three. This would put us at number four. So we're still at the low end of first-class cities. Understanding that we have no information from any of the other first-class cities or where that might be, you know, where they might be at this coming budget year, but if we take what we know their existing budget is, understanding where this would put us, that would slide us into number four.
Randy, is that existing debt service, is that pretty much in line where we've been about every year? I mean, is that pretty consistent?
The, yeah, we've tried to keep our debt service fund property tax levy pretty much constant. We've done a good job of doing that. So this projection has in there, keeping that debt service fund property tax constant again. As we go out, we've let that bump around a little bit as the bonds fall off and come on. Public safety tax anticipation bonds, about every two years, we have one of those issues, and about every two years, one of them falls off. So it just kind of depends on where those fall in the mix as to what happens with your existing debt service fund property tax requirement.
We'll also, as we're looking at those, be looking at what is projected in the fire, particularly in that public safety area. So if it would be a situation where you could adjust that downward a little bit, but we know that there's, the next year, we've got a big piece of fire equipment coming. We'll probably maintain that constant so that it doesn't give any whipsaw actions in the tax rates.
Comments, council? Questions? I ask to start this as early as we possibly could so that we can work through this and be in a better position as we move forward and have some of the concerns that we found ourselves looking at last year late in the process being addressed early on. So that's why we're looking at it tonight. And again, if you, anything you're seeing, any concerns, I'd like to hear them. And certainly, we'll have many more of these conversations, I'm sure, but it just gives us the ability to certainly, you know, what you're looking at right here in that nice Lego color-coded graph, I appreciate because, like I say, it's where we were in January, conversation that we were having, and I just wanted us to go right back there, start there, and start building from there, so.
Start revisit, or, you know, we're going to see this back again. Again, I don't want to see it go back onto a shelf and then we get down to the same timeframe where we were last year.
Right.
You know, that's probably the most frustrating thing about, and I realize that there's elements that you have little control over, but that's one of the most frustrating things is to receive a budget one meeting before it has to be approved.
And we've had extensive conversations about that, and our goal in visiting tonight is to give you that first blush of, this is where we see the operating levy specifically. We understand that the council priority levy is largely subject to referendum. So, well, again, what we have the most control over right now or the most sensitivity to right now is that operating levy. But our goal tonight is to introduce this to you, make sure that we answer your questions. Quite honestly, we are looking for council direction. We'd like to set that target and go back to, and we're, from a staff perspective, we're ready to start digging into the individual departmental budgets, those line-item budgets that we take care of. The most important thing to us right now is having that target. If you can tell us where, as a council, you think we should be in the budget, we can go back and work it until we get to that point, understanding that if you set the budget extremely low, we'll come back to you with the consequences of that as well. If we, an example would be if we went back and said we're going to have a zero increase in the operating budget, the question we have to come back to you with is what services do we eliminate? I mean, that's part of the discussion. So in looking at the long-range financial plan, it's showing you every decision we make has an implication for not only this year but next year and the year after. It changes the questions, but it's still a decision that we have to make, you as a council have to make. We're prepared to bring you a budget in line with what it is that you're looking for. What we would like to have is a target as to where you see, where you see the budget going as a council. I don't know that we have to have that tonight, but we would like that number sooner than later because we're ready to start on our budget process internally and bring that back to you. To answer your question, Jim, our goal is to understand what that target is, put that budget together. We want to have a budget that we can take to a town hall meeting. We want to get it out in front of the public. We want the citizens to understand what's in the budget, present it there, take their feedback, bring it back to the council as a more refined budget. Our goal is to have three budget readings so that you have three meetings to review it. Last year, I know that for several reasons, and we won't go into those, but we ended up with the budget hearing, and then we needed to vote on it, so we had a budget, all in a very short timeframe. We will not do that this year. The budget will come in front of you in a timely manner so that you can have three readings if you choose to. If you choose to adopt it in one, you will have that, as always, have that right. But there will be time to hold three individual meetings or readings on the budget. It's not fair to you to put you into that, into that position where you have to make a decision tonight or we don't have a budget. We won't do that. So there's no shelf life to this. This is a living document from this day forward. It has been for some time now, but this will stay active. I guess I would take feedback on the town hall meeting concept as well. I haven't shared that with you up to this point, but I think it would be in all of our best interests. I think that that would be consistent with what I've heard from the council in the past is hearing from our constituents as to what they like or don't like, and it gives them a chance to understand it, those that choose to. But we want to do the best that we can to explain it not only to the council but to those folks that are watching and, you know, watching what we're doing and wanting to know where the budget is at. So we'll put it out there as simply as we can and explain it to the best of our ability and answer those questions that we can, and those that we can't, we'll get the answers for.
And I appreciate that, Al, because I think that's an important piece of it. I certainly know that from my experience last year, which was kind of a first-time experience, there's a lot of questions that I had as a citizen, and I think it's important that we all understand in a common-sense way the effect of every decision that we make and be able to explain that to our citizens. So I appreciate the efforts that's gone into this so far. And again, I think what we're looking for is just all the input, all the questions that you might have, and the same thing for the citizens. I mean, let's address them and answer them early on. Speak to us and let us know what your concerns are, and we'll work through them, but without hearing from our citizens, I like the idea, as you know, of the, certainly having the ability to have the town hall. I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but I always think they're productive. Randy, anything you want to add to any of this discussion tonight? I know you've been...
I think Al covered it pretty well.
Okay. Dennis?
Just to reiterate that Al says, you know, whatever you can give us for a target will extremely help us put together a budget that will be agreeable with all of you and get us moving forward. When we get done with the budget discussion, we need to go back to the library a little bit.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, council, while we're here? Well, staff, thank you. I appreciate it very much. I would also like to take opportunity to say to Mr. McKenzie and his group that are instrumental in giving us these visuals as you see before you tonight, the new equipment, et cetera. I think it's great. I would like, I see our airport authority folk have already slipped out on us, but I think it would be beneficial for us maybe to offer this facility to, whether it be the airport authority, the vehicle parking district, whomever is, you know, to allow our citizens the ability to see what is going on through the web, and I just think this is great. So again, I just want to say thank you to your whole team, Jim, that has made this possible and...
I'd like to say thanks to Leon. Leon did a tremendous amount of work on it.
Leon, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
One thing that I'll point out, and I'll echo your comments, I think Jim and Leon and the team did a fantastic job on putting this together. We not only are broadcasting over cable, this is also being broadcast on the web. It is just, you know, reaching out toward the citizenry more and more. There are more avenues today to get the information out than ever before, and Jim is very good at continuing to put that out there. But the pictures that you see on the screen now are fed directly into the camera, so we're not trying to focus a camera on the screen. The effort is to make it more legible for those people watching. I don't think that we're perfect yet, but, boy, we're sure trying, and if anybody's got suggestions, we're open to that as well.
Great. Anything else for the good of the cause?
Library.
Library.
I have some additional, we need a little more feedback on the library discussion.
Thank you, Dennis. The challenge that we have with the library, and I missed that, so I apologize. One of the things that we're working on with the library discussion, when we put this equipment in, when we talk about the total cost of the project being between $4,000 and $500,000, in essence, that's an air-to-air system with a variable refrigerant flow. For another $160,000, we can do a geothermal system. The challenge that we have is the modeling software that is available to us is not real reliable, if it exists. As near as we can tell, we would save about $4,000 a year in energy costs. So with a $160,000 addition, that's about a 40-year payback.
40-year payback.
At this point, I'm not sure that I can recommend to you to do the added expense, but we wanted to just double-check to make sure there wasn't any real strong feelings about the geothermal with the anticipated energy savings that we would have.
I wish I could add any type of, you know, somebody that knows...
Well, on those types of dollars and that way, you know, it's a hard justification for a geothermal situation over that time period. I don't know if they've looked at any of the other situations as far as air handlers where they have the self-contained, the units that actually work space-to-space that way. It's one of the things that the chamber is considering, getting away from the geothermal situation. But there's some additional fund or additional monies needed, but not near to the same extent that way because you're not talking about, you know, geothermal necessarily precludes the fact that you're going to have a source exchange or ground source exchange, so it means that you've got to put a bunch of wells down. As others, this is a situation where you have a cooling tower situation, but you get away from a lot of the, some of the savings are in the controls because it's units-to-unit spaces that way. So I don't know who you have looking at it right now.
We have Morrissey Engineering doing the design on it. The thing that we are doing is we're putting the compressors and the air handling equipment in the existing mechanical room, so we'll be able to, the plant...